It is July 13th, 6 o'clock, and this session of the City Council Huntsville City Council Meeting will come to order. We welcome all those who have joined us this evening. We will begin with an invocation given by Bishop Christopher Servie, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Bill Kling. Please rise for the invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to gather this night as citizens of this great country and as members of the Huntsville community. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to live here in Huntsville in such a prosperous area. We're grateful for our council and the mayor. We're grateful for all of our elected officials here in Huntsville who strive to do the things that thou would happen to do. To keep in mind the citizens of Huntsville and the residents here, to keep in mind the poor and the wealthy and all those in between, all those of different economic and racial backgrounds, we're grateful for their consideration of all members of our community. We pray that thou be with them this night as they make decisions that they might do so in the best interest of Huntsville. We're grateful for our responders, our police officers, our firefighters, all those who serve the community here in Huntsville. We ask that thou be with them, that thou would bless them and their families as they are in harm's way. We pray that thou would bless those in the military, especially those from our Huntsville community, that thou would be with them. We're grateful for all those in Huntsville and Madison County that support our military and do what they can to keep them safe. We pray again that thou be with this council this night and with those who speak and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop Servie. Thank you, Councilman Kling. You have received the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 22nd, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to the minutes that have been received? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. We will move on to resolutions and special recognitions. The mayor has a number of very special recognitions tonight. The presentation of life-saving medals, a resolution commending Stanley Schott Stadium for his service Huntsville Utilities, and a resolution commending Anthony Tony Owens for his service to Huntsville Utilities. Mayor, you have the floor for those special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam President. And if I could ask Chief Mark Murray to come forward with some of his command staff. We have some life-saving medals we want to present, and we have some proud parents in the audience, too, who we need to make sure that they're recognized also. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman, Dr. Robinson, President. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this real quickly. I want to tell you about this first incident, and if I'd have Officer Tracy Black and Officer Donald Holycross come up here, please. This is one that I wish I could show you the video from the body-worn camera because it's an act of heroism that we really can't train a person for. They arrived on a call of a distressed person, possibly intoxicated, wanting to suicide. And rather than reading this, I'll just tell you what I saw what happened. Lady inside the apartment, when they came inside the apartment, she was threatening suicide, and all of a sudden she presented a firearm. Officers drew their weapons because this is a lot of times when you reach an incident like a suicide by cop, and somebody will intentionally point a gun at an officer because they can't kill themselves, they want the officer to kill them. Well, these two officers were confronted with it, and in a minute's notice, Officer Tracy Black, who's first officer here, she took the position of cover first, and then Officer Holycross here, he took primary cover. And while they were covering him, Officer Black here was able to continue to dialogue with this person, and she kept pointing the gun at her head. So she was talking to the officers, threatening she's going to shoot herself in the head. Officer Black had the frame of mind that she switched her gun to her off-gun hand side. And we do train our officers to shoot with both hands, but we never expect it to happen. And while they were covering her, this intoxicated person actually dropped their gun for a split second. And when they did, Officer Black was able to draw her taser quickly with her gun hand and shoot the person with the taser, disabling them, and of course made her drop her firearm. When they did, both officers, of course, grabbed the person because the taser will disable you for about five seconds. Within that five seconds, they got the gun away from her, had her in handcuffs, and we wheeled her off and got her some medication, which she needed. She was a mental health patient, and she was having some depression issues, which only gets worse with alcohol. Again, Mayor, City Councilman, you bought these tasers for a reason. They're paying off. Thank you. I know it was a half a million dollar gamble, but this is a very worthwhile gamble, and it's a very worthwhile investment in our community. So these two have distinguished themselves with one of the highest awards we could give you, and that is a life-saving award. So this is a life-saving award being presented. Go ahead and give Officer Holycross his. If you would, turn around, take a picture with it. Thank you so much. We're very proud of you. If the parents would come up here real quick, I want to get a picture with the mayor and your proud officer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just a couple of months ago, another one of our officers, Matthew Troncone, would you come up here, please? Let me tell you what he did. Late at night, dark, he was called to a distressed citizen's house who, again, was threatening suicide. Not being able to get anyone to the door, he just went on his own, went around the backyard with his flashlight, started looking around, quickly identified a person who was hanging by their neck from some extension cords in the back of the house. I'm not sure how long it would have taken to find this person. Matt found him very quickly, cut him down, got the cord off their neck, called Hemsy. Hemsy started life-saving procedures with this officer. Hemsy was able to bring this person back to life, and they're still with us today. So they were unconscious, they were not breathing at first. Again, this is working, this thinking on your feet. Going in people's backyards at night with a flashlight is not advisable to most of us, right? Takes a certain amount of courage to do that on your own. He did that. And as a result, he saved somebody's life, and I'm honored to present him again with the life-saving award that he can wear on his uniform. Thank you. Very proud of you. Family? Matt? Come on up here for a second.
Saban, come up here. I want to introduce you, too. You've been up here before, too. His brother's also a police officer, works in a different division time. But I think this will make a good family shot. Thank you for coming up here.
Congratulations. Smile. No one really knows when to smile. Thank you, brother. Appreciate it.
Madam President, we also have two resolutions, one for Schott Stadium for his term on Huntsville Utility Board and all the time that he has given back to the city of doing that service, and one for Tony Owens for standing in as CEO of Huntsville Utilities. And those will be presented at Huntsville Utility Board Meeting. Thank you.
Madam President, we still need to approve them, so I'll make a motion to consolidate and approve 4A, 2, and 3.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to all those, and thank you to those who serve the city in so many unique and varied capacities. Item 4B2 is a resolution from the council for adoption only, a resolution congratulating Carleen Teague Johnson on her 70th birthday to be celebrated July 15th, 2017, at the Palladium. Mr. Culver, I think this is your motion? Second from the chair.
Thank you.
All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one announcement, item 8A. Huntsville Utilities has asked for approval of the council by unanimous consent this evening, so when we get to item 8A, please note that. We have no business with outside legal representation. We also have no public hearings to be held, but we do have a number of public hearings to be set. Item 6B1 is a resolution to set a hearing for Tiffany Bradley Lancaster and Anthony Lancaster doing business as Kitty Cab LLC. This will be set for the July 27th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6B2 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending the City of Huntsville Air Pollution Control Rules and Regulations to be set for the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is, the public hearing is set. 6B3 is a request to set a public hearing to appeal the decision of the Liquor License Review Committee on the issuance of a retail beer and wine license to Northside Store, Inc., located at 5160 Blue Spring Road, Huntsville, Alabama, to be set for the July 27th, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. 6B4 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning 24.35 acres of property lying on the west side of Suckwell Drive and south of Hazland Road from Residence 1A District to Residence 2 District to be set for the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is set. 6B5 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning 1.31 acres of property lying on the west side of First Street and on the south side of Freeman Road from Heavy Industry District to Village Business C6 District to be set for the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move. Second.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second from Mr. Russell. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The public hearing is set. 6B6 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning 2.63 acres of newly annexed property lying on the north side of Governor's West and north of Interstate 565 to Commercial Industry Park District to be set for the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Motion from Mr. Culver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is set. 6B7, resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning 96.20 acres of newly annexed property lying on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Paul Drive to Residence 2 District to be set for the August 24, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to set the hearing?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Culver. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The public hearing is set. 6B8 is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning 2.06 acres of newly annexed property lying south of Hobbs Island Road and south of Railway Lane to Residence 2A District set for August 24, 2017, regular council meeting. Motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The public hearing is set. This brings us to communications from the public. We have one person who has signed up to comment tonight, and that is Ms. Reed. And Ms. Reed certainly knows the drill. You have three minutes, Ms. Reed. Please, and the subject is government issues. Ms. Reed?
Government issues. I've got so many, I can't itemize them all. Anyway, I want to thank you tonight for laying public input every time. And I want to thank all the city employees and police officers that lay their lives on the line to save people, and the firefighters. When the budget comes up this year, I want to know what's going on. Remember them, race time, what they do, what their jobs is, and why they need some money. I'm working for the employees and the people. I really am here tonight to ask you about traffic coming. We have traffic overflow. It's getting honestly ridiculous in this city. We got to, I'd like to know, Mayor Battle, sometime on Channel 42, where we're socializing quite a bit lately, that's okay. I learn a lot from all them TV things you have going on. But I would like to know when some of these meetings are and let the public know about the various zoning advance board, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is state-funded that you all give them to tell us what to do with the money, and the planning commission meetings. I would like all these meetings logged into Channel 42. Maybe nobody else don't care, but I do, and I like to go to all of them, so having to make an appointment and go up there to find out and call around every day or something, it's sort of a little bit unnecessary. But anyway, traffic coming, and streets in this city, when are you going to start paving some streets? I mean, I've got many issues of the city that I'd like to. In the budget time, instead of hiring seven police officers this budget year like you did last year, we need 107, or 177. We don't have enough police officers to run the city. I don't want to come up here and complain, but I want to tell you what we need. It ain't all about big development, tearing down buildings. I think we need to work with the real estate people and the owners of these buildings, like you do with community development houses. Either fix them up and help to rent them, or you can tear them down. We're not going to tear them down for you or buy them from you. What we need to do is start having some common sense. I hear some of you's got some up there. Sometime I'd like to start seeing a little of it, but is my time up? Anyway.
You have 40 more seconds, Ms. Reed.
Two more seconds. I want to get back on that golf course. I'm not happy with what happened at the last meeting with the golf course. I think you need to bring that back up because you promised the people you had two options, and they were not but one brought up. It's just like the old Madison Square Mall out there. When I looked into it, that you had evicted them instead of not renting the building, and y'all had evicted them? It's just like this golf course down here, Minnesota Golf Course. We needed to keep that and tried to work it both ways. Anyway, we still need to bring that back up. Like you said, we had two options. And I seen y'all preach up there for three hours almost, trying to sell each other on what to do with the golf course. Y'all sat up there and mouthed and mouthed and mouthed.
Ms. Reed, your time is up.
I think you had your votes made up when you got here. Thank you. I love you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Madam President, if I could, just to help recollect Ms. Reed's mind, there was two things that were brought up concerning the golf course. I did propose an amendment to keep the golf course and reroute, you know, piggyback on Mr. Russell's proposal to keep the park. That was discussed. You were at that meeting, and you should have been, you know, awake at that time.
Mayor Battle, would you like to make a comment?
And I might mention, we have had some people ask about roads and what roads are going to be paved. As soon as the list is passed by council, I think that comes up next council meeting, if I remember right. Mr. McNeese is going to bring our summer roads to be repaved, and as soon as that is done, we will put that on the website so everybody can see what roads are being done. We will start reevaluating roads in October. And I think that's one of the factors that we're looking at in this next year's budget as we look at the budget. It's obvious we're not getting as much road paved for the dollar as we used to because we're having, because ADA compliance is costing us about 40% more in our paving. And there are many, especially collector roads, that need to be paved throughout the city, so we're going to try to address that as we hit budget time this year, and that will be coming up in September. The Channel 42, when we have the board meetings, Ms. Reed, I'll try to work with everybody. All those board meetings are set. I think the Planning Commission is the third or fourth Tuesday of each month, but we'll get you that schedule and put it on board and also get it to you so that you know when those meetings are. Common sense, we also try to get some common sense going on. Common sense makes a lot of sense for us, so we try to do that on a day-to-day basis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will now move on. That closes communications from the public. Sir, this time is for individuals who have signed up in advance. We have a time at the end of the meeting. For those who have not signed up, and we look forward to hearing from you then. Item 8, Huntsville Utility Items. Item 8A is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of Electric Revenue Warrant Series 2017-A and Electric Revenue Warrant Series 2017-B of the City of Huntsville. This item has been presented for unanimous consideration and approval this evening. The chair moves for unanimous consent of this item.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved for unanimous consent. The chair moves to approve the ordinance as stated.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Gertis, would you like to give us the details on this item?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to reiterate, as we introduced this to you at the last meeting, this is a combination of $70 million of new debt and a refinancing of $25 million in 2011 series warrants that will help the utility realize the savings of about $1 million.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gertis or comments on this item?
Madam President, if we could hear from their attorney, Mr. Cantor, please. Mr. Cantor, could you please describe the work and ensure the council that everything's done in a legal manner?
Everything is done in a legal manner. I'm opining that everything is done in a legal manner, so it's not just my word, but my law firm's behind that. The ordinance that is before you is an ordinance, of course, to achieve the result that was described to you, refinancing of all of the existing electric revenue debt, which not only achieves the savings but gets rid of some old quirky covenants. Your indenture on the electric system is a 1986 indenture and had covenants that reflected a market in 1986 that are no longer necessary, such as a debt service reserve fund. That's no longer needed, you don't get any credit for it, but it leads to uninvested cash, and that, over time, can be very costly. So your new indenture, which is one of the items you'll be approving in this ordinance, does not have a debt service reserve fund. That released cash is used to pay down the debt that's being refinanced and thus lower the borrowing costs. It's also important to note that these warrants are payable solely out of electric system revenues, remaining after the payment of operating expenses. In addition to what's being authorized is ratifying a preliminary official statement used to market the warrants and authorizing Mayor Battle to sign a final official statement to reflect the pricing results that were achieved in the sale to enable the refinancing and the financing of the new improvements, which are funded by the first series warrants.
Any other questions?
We always have a question. Hypothetically, if the bonds weren't paid back by the utility company, who would pay for them?
Well, the warrants are payable solely from revenues of the utility system. So if hypothetically the utility system had no revenues, then the holders of the warrants, you know, would have no collateral. That is the sole collateral. They're not general obligations of the city. The full faith and credit of the city are not pledged to these obligations. They don't count against the city's constitutional debt limit, or any other debt limit, for that matter, applicable to the city. They're limited obligations.
Thank you. That was my question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving this ordinance?
Aye.
Please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Item 8B is another Huntsville Utilities item. It is a resolution authorizing the approval to purchase one Weco True Three-Phase Meter Test System model, 2350. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Mr. Culver?
Could you repeat that? Or is it?
It's a resolution. The ordinance. Thank you. Councilman Culver, anyone else?
I think you want to hear Mr. Gertis explain what a Weco True Three-Phase.
There you go.
So this one is decidedly simpler than the previous item. This is testing equipment for high-demand service meters. Three-phase basically speaks to commercial and industrial customers, and so this is basically testing equipment to ensure that that equipment is functioning properly. Price for this one is $41,505.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Gertis. Item 9, board appointments. 9A, board appointments to be voted on. We have a number of them. 9A1, a resolution appointing Sam Green to the Advisory Commission on Accessibility for a term to expire January 10, 2018, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The appointment is approved. 9A2, a resolution appointing Sam Green to the Medical Clinic Board of Huntsville, Alabama, 1973, for a term to expire January 24, 2022, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. 9A3 is a resolution appointing Dr. Tanisha E. Daniels to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2018, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting.
Should be approved.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by the chair. Is there any discussion? Should be noted that this is the completion of an unexpired term. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. 9A4 is a resolution appointing Dane Block to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Group A, for a term to expire July 26, 2022, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. 9A5 is a resolution appointing Trey Probst to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority, Group A, for a term to expire July 26, 2022, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. 9A6 is a resolution reappointing Arlie McCormick to the Alabama Constitution Village Historic Huntsville Depot Board for a term to expire June 26, 2020, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting. Motion to approve by the chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. 9A7 is a resolution appointing Ronald Bowles to the Huntsville Electric Utility Board for a term to expire July 1, 2020, nominated at the June 22nd, 2017, regular council meeting. Motion by the chair.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Bowles is constituent and a good friend and a very capable individual, well-respected in the business community. However, he has served on the board for 30-plus years, and as you well know, I think the council needs to consider changing out some of the board appointments just to have other people look at it and include more people. Obviously, this appointment's probably going to go through, and I will vote for it, but I do wish the council would consider some change in the future.
Point well taken. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The appointment is approved. We have no board appointment nominations listed on the agenda. Are there any from the floor? Hearing none, we will move on to item 10, Approval of Expenditures Finance Committee Report. 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling, would you like to give us the report and make that motion?
Madam President, I'm going to ask if we could come back to me. The vouchers were not with me this evening, and I was expecting them to be down here. So we could try to come back and see if we could locate that before the meeting is over.
Do you have that?
Well, we have Plan B, courtesy of Mr. Biden.
Thank you. Always good to have backup.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Biden.
Move for payment of vouchers amount of nine point five million seven, excuse me, nine million five hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second, second by Mr. Culver. Are there questions for Mr. Kling? Any comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Kling?
No.
No report. We will move on to item eleven, Communications from the Mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Very quickly, Madam President, with just a few activities happening that we'd like to let everybody know about and make sure that everybody enjoys music on the squares tonight, Green Street Market. And on, at Green Street Market on July thirteenth is Eat a Peach Day, so everybody come ready for their peach. And we have music under the lights on Clinton Avenue from five to eight. And then tomorrow night, we have movies in the park, and the movie is Star Wars: The Force Awakens. Also concerts in the park on Monday, Light Suns and Denim Jawbones are the bands. I've never heard Light Suns or Denim Jawbones, so I think it'll be a great experience. And the Food Truck All-Stars are on Friday, the twenty-first. Lot of activities happening in the in the community. I hope everybody will take some, take advantage of these and come out and just enjoy seeing your neighbor while you're out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will move on to communications from the council, beginning with Councilman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll keep it short. On Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, there will be a town hall held by our State Representative, Laura Hall. They are battling a number of issues. I think that will be at the Riches Shower Center, if I'm not mistaken. If I am wrong, don't quote me on it and strike it from the record. Also, wanted to make a moment notice, I think it was last week, I went to the graduation of the Police Academy, which was wonderful. They had an amazing speaker in our A.G., and I think it was probably very unique for me because there was a cadet who graduated, there was a family there who had been through so much. But I remember when I met this family, I moved in probably around ninth grade, and his name is Zephon Reggins, and he said it in fifth grade that he wanted to be a police officer. And to sort of see that start and finish, to see what Captain McCarver has done and that Police Department has done with him, to know where he was and to know who he is today, my hat goes off to HPD, and I'm extremely proud to be an advocate for our Police Department. But it is a blessing to know that through the selection process with no help from anybody else, he found a way to graduate sort of in the top of his class, and he is definitely a different human being after the the session. And I am truly, truly blessed to be a part of that family and to see the tears as he walked across that stage. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Keith. Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. The Parks and Rec Department has been doing a Go Play Huntsville Challenge. It's very interesting. Each day, they have challenged citizens and the council to do activities, and I've seen Councilman Keith do a few, and I hope the other council members will be doing them or if you hadn't already. But you can post on social media and hashtag Go Play Huntsville. Today's Go Play Huntsville Challenge was to feed the fish with the food out of the machine, not the french fries from your car or anything, or the bread loaf, but the real good food and feed the fish. It's things like that, and it's got me out in the city. I know the sports community very well, and I know the Parks and Rec system very well, but I've been surprised at how many new parks we have and how many different parks we have and how many different activities we have for our citizens. I had heard about the Indian Creek Greenway, Mr. Culver. It's a very nice greenway in your district, and I'd heard about it, but I never walked it. And a couple Sundays ago, went out and walked in, and it's really a great thing for the City of Huntsville. So I've been finding out new things, and so I encourage you also to participate. The council and the mayor were privileged to open up the Aquatic Center last week, and it's a wonderful facility. It has something for about everybody, if you like water. And this past weekend, they were able to host the City Swim Meet, and those of you that have ever had the pleasure of going to City Swim Meet in the past, you know that it used to not be the best experience. It was very hot and very chlorine smelling and could be a long day. Well, it was totally changed this week, this past weekend. It was air-conditioned inside, it doesn't smell like chlorine, and the kids were having a great time. And we probably had, I would guess, five thousand, six thousand kids come through there, or people come through there, and it was really impressive to see so many of our citizens use that facility. And we're also going to have a big swim meet coming up this week, and it's to, it's going to be a great southeastern event, and sports tourism is really important to the City of Huntsville, and you'll see it in action this week. We'll have approximately twelve hundred swimmers here, and they'll be eating our restaurants and staying in our hotels, and it will have definitely impact on our community. But I just wanted to remind all you that one of the great things about the Aquatic Center is we're going to host tournaments occasionally. We'll have them probably fifteen days, they'll be shut down to host tournaments, but all those other days, the public can use the pool. So we just happen to have two tournaments the first three weeks it's open, but as we go forward, you'll be able to swim in the pool and use it any way you see fit, per the rules. Some of the other things are going on, the international team, nine through eleven-year-old All-Star team had played in our tournaments here, and they went down somewhere in South Alabama and won the state championship, and they're going to go on to North Carolina, so we wish them well. They got a great bunch of kids and a great bunch of parents, and I've enjoyed watching them this season. So I encourage you to do the challenge. Councilman Keith, I think, has done it well, and I know the rest of y'all will be doing as well, so I look forward to seeing your posts. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
And if I may, Madam President, one, I would like to piggyback and say, if you do want to see something interesting, please go to the Park and Recs page, and you will get the chance to see the glory days of Councilman Russell shooting basketball, which is interesting and funny at the same time.
What was funny about it?
No comment. I was absolutely wrong, so Facebook allows you to be instantly right. Somebody just sent me a text and said Laura Hall's town hall will be at Oakwood University. Oakwood University, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Councilman Kling.
Well, piggybacking off of Mr. Russell, I have been to groundbreakings, I have been to flag waving, I have been to all sorts of ceremonial events that have taken place, but I have never been at an event, some of what they had at the Naterium's opening, they had, I think Mayor Battle referred to it as a splash-in, they had two hundred kids simultaneously jump into the water, splashed to officially open up the the Naterium. And I think as Councilman Russell had said, that is really a very impressive facility, and I think it's going to be great for the community and certainly great for bringing people in from out of town for competitions, and gives us a chance to show off our community. And I was very impressed, and, you know, I think it's really exciting to see what's going on and to see competitions where you can overlook the window and see out the lagoon into the park, and that's just a very beautiful area, and I think that's going to be a magnet for some other great things that are going to take place in that section of the city. Another thing that took place in addition to the Naterium opening was the groundbreaking for Merchant Square, and that's going to be a great thing taking place over at the corner of Bob Wallace and the Parkway, and I think that's going to be very exciting to see what comes out there in the next, within the next year. And I understand we have numerous new entities that are coming, several from Nashville, but things that are new to the City of Huntsville, so that's certainly going to be a great plus for the central area of the city. During the last couple of weeks, a lot of interesting events to get out to. The Neighborhood Meeting for McThormore Acres, Huntsville South Civic Association had a reception for the mayor, council, and other elected officials and a chance to kind of visit with with folks in in the neighborhood. Also, on the Fourth of July, it was, it's that tough job that we all have to do with, and that's getting out to eat barbecues and going to cookouts. And I enjoyed spending time Fraternal Order of Eagles. Also, over at the American Legion Post 237, just a great place to be. And for those of us who aren't that good at cooking on the grill, this was the, this was the best thing to happen. And enjoy the hospitality and getting out, and certainly a good time to to visit with with many old friends. The Merrimack Joe Bradley Reunion held their annual get-together two Saturdays ago, and then we had people from as far away as Missouri come to Huntsville just for that one-day event. Last night was the Fraternal Order of Eagles Anniversary Dinner, great food, good fellowship. And if my, my tongue happens to be a little bit on the purple side, it's because I was drafted by Eric Wade and Joy McKee to come down to help put together snow cones that we gave to a hundred and ten young people who were involved in the Keystone Leadership Group. They were there to do a service project at Brands Springs Park, cleaning up and picking up garbage, lot of fun. And if it's possible to to get chap lips in the middle of July, that that happened to me yesterday afternoon, but certainly was a lot of fun. Monday night, I'll be having my monthly town meeting, six o'clock at the library. Everyone's invited. Only rule we have is no one can wear a necktie. And Councilman Keith is already dressed for the occasion like that. And one thing on a more of a serious note, there are sometimes, you know, we go through things, we have contentious issues, things don't always work out the way each of us likes on every issue, and then sometimes things fall into place and things just have a way of working out in a way that we just think is really great. And one example is the situation on Golf Road. Everybody has heard for years about the plush horse, the issues that the Police Department and neighborhood have had with the nightclub. Well, things have worked out where the plush horse is now going to become a church, and that is certainly something that the neighborhood thinks is a great thing to happen. It's a great location for a church because it's right off of the Parkway, just go up Golf Road, and it's certainly a very large building, and this is something that's going to be a plus for the neighborhood, it's going to solve the noise problems that we've had in the past, and the best part is it's not going to be costing the taxpayers a penny. This is all being done by the church with private money. And I'd like to extend, I guess, a laurel to to Mr. Brazelton for working on that. In fact, I understand that he actually is donating half of the property to the church in return for their buying the other half. So that was a deal he had originally had brought to the city a long time ago. But again, things are working out, and I think that's certainly going to be a positive for that neighborhood, and it's just nice when things, good things do work out here in the City of Huntsville. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kling, Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilman Kling, Mr. Brazelton sends his appreciation to all of us here for just entertaining the idea of purchasing that property. I'm elated that it worked out favorably. That is a win-win situation, not only for the Brazeltons, but for the church and for the community at whole. Just a couple of things, since I'm on the Golf Road bit right now, just, I just want the record to reflect that as it relates to where I stood with the golf course. I think every municipality should have a golf course. I supported both the dual purpose of that park, the multi-use park and the golf course. So I just digress back to that week, but sometimes you have to know when when to fold them, and for all practical purposes, after Mr. Hamilton explained the situation that we had on Golf Road, it only made sense then to make that a multi-use park. And I hope that at some future time, that this great city government mayor and council will entertain a future municipal golf course when and where that opportunity may present itself. So we'll certainly be looking out for that, if at all possible. On Saturday, just a couple of things. The beauty about coming last is that I don't have to regurgitate all of the things that have been said, so ditto to everything that's been said. What I want to share with you is on Saturday, July the fifteenth, I will be presenting a resolution on behalf of the city to Ms. Clarine Teague Johnson. She's celebrating her seventieth, 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 seven, seventieth, and I tried to trip you up, Madam President. Karma is something else. Birthday on July fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, at the Pilodeum. And you're probably wondering, why are we doing a resolution? That is a very good question, and I'm so glad all of you asked. Ms. Teague Johnson is a four-time graduate of Alabama Agricultural and Mechanical University. She holds a Bachelor Degree of Science in Home Economics, Childhood Development. She holds two Masters of Education degrees, one in Home Economics, one in Child Development, and one in Adult Education. And she's an, has an Educational Specialist Degree in Administration and Supervision. Ms. Johnson attended Ohio State University in a doctoral program following her graduation from A&amp;M. Ms. Clarine Johnson became a special education teacher. Her second career was with the Alabama Cooperative Extension by Auburn University and later at Alabama A&amp;M University, where she taught for over forty years. So I'm looking forward to that celebration. Also, on Sunday, July the sixteenth, I will be speaking at Cavalry Church of the Nazarene. I want to invite all of you to come out if you choose. Cavalry Church of the Nazarene is located at the intersection of Tailstar and Centaur, right there in the corner, Councilman Kling, in your district, southwest Huntsville. That is all I have, Madam President. Thank you so kindly, and thank you for your assistance with the tongue twister.
And thank you for yours as well. Thank you, Mr. Culver. As as we've just heard, there are so many wonderful things going on in this community, and we are so fortunate to live here. We have a wonderful quality of life, and that's what attracts people to come here, and it attracts businesses to come, and that's that's good for all of us. A couple of additional events are coming up this next week. We will be proud to have the ribbon cutting for the New Grissom High School on the west side of the Parkway. It will be on July twentieth at ten o'clock. There is a great deal of community interest in that, and if you have not had a chance to be inside the building, this will be a great chance to see that building. It it will be, it's a game changer for South Huntsville, and we are looking forward to to that ribbon cutting and the opening of the school for the new school year. The question that's always asked when we talk about the New Grissom is, so, what's going into the the existing site on Bailey Cove? Answers to that question will take place this Monday evening, July seventeenth, at six-thirty. We will hold a community meeting to discuss the plans for a new community center, which will include a library, a brand-new, state-of-the-art, beautiful library to replace the existing Bailey Cove Library, a Performing Arts Center, which will be managed by Arts Huntsville, ball fields and and gyms and recreation facilities that will be managed by the City of Huntsville. It will make a great model for a hub, a community hub, that will be a benefit to the entire community and will be and will be a great strength. So we invite all of you to come Monday night, July seventeenth, at six-thirty, to learn more about all those amenities that will be coming to South Huntsville. In addition to going to all kinds of ribbon cuttings and other fun events, I have also spent the last month, six weeks, meeting with residents from the Jackson Bend and Whitesburg Estates community, as well as with our planning department, our engineering department, and also the developer who is looking at doing a project in that area. Gathering facts, which is really important to do, I have been doing my best to share those facts with concerned residents, and our engineering department has also accepted the challenge of as clearly as possible conveying information, and they are going to have some documents ready that will go out to the the Neighborhood Association to help them better understand what's going on there. The the developer, I've also made four trips out with the developer and with members of our staff to look at the property, and he also is making a number of concessions in addressing their needs. It's a great, it's been a great example of a community working together, and I think it's one of those cases where we need to share as much information as possible. I'm fond of saying that if you don't give people good information, they make it up. So we want to give people as much good information as we possibly can in that, and look forward to seeing those documents, particularly from engineering, coming forward to help people understand exactly what's going into that development and what a benefit it will be to the community as a whole. Finally, I want to follow up on some comments that Councilman Keith made. Like Councilman Keith, I have a special place in my heart for police officers, for all those who serve our city, our first responders, and I'm grateful that Bishop Masurvi acknowledged them in his prayer as well and prayed for their protection. I have a son-in-law who is a police officer in Arizona, so I had a great interest in the the academy graduation, however, I was out of town and couldn't attend. But I loved reading the city blog that Mark McCarter wrote that featured four of our academy cadets. And if you haven't read it, you need to take a look at it because their stories are wonderful, and they are told from the first person about their experience in the academy. And if if the rest of the the cadets are are at all like those four, our city is in very good hands. Thank you all for your comments. We will move on to item number thirteen, Unfinished Business Items for Action. Thirteen A is an ordinance number seventeen dash four-five-six, amending Chapter Fifteen, Article Three, Division Five, Section fifteen dash one-three-one and fifteen dash one-three-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. This was introduced at the June twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen Regular Counsel Meeting. Mr. Hamilton, would you like to introduce this? Mr. Hamilton, would you like to introduce this?
So the ordinance sits before you specifically addresses the current lodging tax for the city, and it proposes an increase to that lodging tax in order to fund projects predominantly at the Von Braun Center. So we've asked, just as you saw at the last council meeting, we've asked the Von Braun Center and the Convention and Visitor Bureau to jointly present the project that is proposed, and then we'll be prepared to address any questions you might have following their presentation.
Mr. Maples, I believe you're here.
Good evening. My name's Steve Maples. I'm the director of the Von Braun Center.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Maples.
Yes, ma'am. Let me just click on this little icon to get started here. I think it was at the June 22nd meeting that we made a presentation. I was out of town, but I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm excited to be here, actually. Believe it or not, this whole project's just got me all excited again. I'm all excited about downtown Huntsville and all the things that's going on. I'm going to do things a little different, and I won't take as much time for my part. I'm going to give you a little bit of history, and a lot of it relates to my working at the VBC and where we are, where we're going, where we've been, that kind of thing, and answer some questions. So let's go back to 1975. And I was a junior in high school. And I saw the Von Braun Center under construction and it had a construction fence around it. And I decided I would go over there and apply for a job. I was a junior at Lee High School. Applied for a job. Lord knows, a couple of months later, they called me and said they would work me part-time. So I started to work part-time. And I guess I graduated high school in '76, and I was hired full-time in 1977. And I've been there ever since, so I'm on my 42nd year. I give you some of that history because I feel connected to the VBC in a very special way. My grandkids think I own it. My children grew up there. But anyway, when the building was built in '75, I was advised by a board member, Executive Director Cliff Wallace at the time, I think it was, said, "If you really want to learn this business, you should start reading the minutes that we do every month and read some of the history." So I read the minutes back in 1973, '72, '73, when the board was originated by the council and setting up on Green Street. They had offices while the VBC was being built. I tell you some of this history, just to let you know. I mean, we've done our research. I can give you files and files and bring you a team of people, but I just wanted to talk to you a little bit more from the heart and from what I believe as a leader of that organization. I've been the executive director for the last 10 years. I was the associate director about 15 years before that. So I'm surrounded by a really good management team, and that's what it takes. And having been surrounded by that team, working with the city, we work real close with the city. The administration department, Mayor's Office, and a lot of the departments, I feel like we're just really, we are a part of the city. So you just take it from there. In 1975, and then just go back a minute and say, you know, so the building was built with a little controversy. But it was built. We built an arena, an exhibit hall, a concert hall, and a playhouse. And we opened up, and business just started, just pouring in. And we were really overwhelmed, to be honest with you. We had some slow months. But four or five years down the road, we realized we had a demand for space that we could not meet. And so we looked at adding on the exhibit hall. So we added the exhibit hall and the kitchen, I believe, somewhere around 1984. Now, I'm getting older and I get my dates mixed up, but I think I got that about right. In 1986, I think it was, '87, we just kept having demands for space, so we built a north hall. And that has truly been a success. That room stays maxed out all the time. And then later on, as time passed, and we continued to book things and continue to grow our business, I guess it was 1996, we built a south hall. And that, again, proved to be money well invested. I believe Huntsville has made a great return on that investment. 2011, we did some renovations to the arena and the concert hall. And here we are, 2017, after working for the last three to five years trying to decide what we need to do to meet the demands, what we proposed. What I hear from my position, a lot of times, you know, the staff gets all the job done, and sometimes I get too much credit. But sometimes after a big event, the leaders of that event, you know, the leaders of the AAUSA event, which is our largest event, SMDC, they want to speak to me. And the first thing they want to tell me, how great of a job the staff did. Second thing they want to tell me is, "We're out of space. What you going to do about it? We need more space." So we've been working for quite a while to get more space. So after a long process, that's where we are. We need more space. And currently, the VBC is about 500,000 square feet, and we're roughly going to put another, proposing to do another 100,000 square foot multipurpose space. That would be the ballroom and the music hall, and a lot of breakout space. As you know, the VBC, most of you have been there, I see you there all the time, it's for events, we are a really busy building. In our industry, we're considered to be one of the busiest buildings for its size. I think last year, we did over 500 events, which equates to about 1,100 event days. That's a busy facility. And we're really proud of it. We take a lot of pride in it. And that's how we get to where we are today. So I didn't want to take a lot of time, but I wanted to tell you a little bit of that before I bring up Paul Matheny, who is going to show you some more of the bells and whistles. And I wanted to make sure if you had any questions, you know, I could answer those questions for you. I think that's, Council, that's about what I had to-
Thank you, Mr. Maples. And just to clarify, what we have in front of us here is not to approve the design or any contracts for this, but it is how we're going to pay for this vision. This is an ordinance changing our lodging tax, the visitors to the community pay and the room surcharge. So if it would be okay, I wanted to do the why first. This is why this is important. So the chair would like to move that we approve this ordinance, which will fund the vision. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. Now, with that on the table, let's move forward now, talking about not only the vision, but also how we're going to do this. So are there questions for Mr. Maples? Would you like to bring Mr. Matheny up to show-
Yes, Paul, you'll come on up. And I would like to add that, as you very well are aware, that, and the CVB will talk more about that, the support locally we have to increase the lodging's tax, that the guests from out of town will be paying for the great, great majority of this project, and it will not affect local very much at all. Mr. Paul Matheny, our architect.
Madam President, are we going to be able to ask Mr. Maples a question, bring him back up?
Oh, yes, yeah, we will. Let's just kind of get the big picture first.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. And I'll certainly be very brief, as you've seen the overview before, but just to refresh everybody's memory. Very happy to be back, and as you can imagine, when you're working with a facility director who is as passionate as Steve is and his staff and his team members there, it really brings forth some wonderful architecture, and we're really excited about what that will do for the community. Not only are we addressing the VBC's direct needs, immediate and short-term, as well as long-term, but we're really excited about the impact this is going to have on just the community at large, our culture downtown, and just becoming a great venue for all of the citizens. You can see in the aerial photo here, the site in question. Of course, we're focused on the VBC. You'll recognize the arena. And the street in the center is Clinton Avenue, running up and down on the screen. And then focusing on the exact site where the proposed expansion of the convention center will occur, it is the spot that was formerly the Medigold Dairy Site. And we've highlighted in red the areas of work associated with that project, which will include, as Steve mentioned, a large addition of new volume, but as well as renovation of existing facilities to support that. And taking a look at what those program items would be, you'll see, of course, the existing north hall, which will be refurbished, a new ballroom, which will be larger and meet contemporary standards and needs for a facility of that type. But among the biggest things that we're doing with this project is creating ample pre-function space or lobby areas where we can accommodate more individuals who are waiting to go into an event or move about freely through the facilities. And so we've really redirected, cleaned up the concourses and the wayfinding within the facility, so it'll be easier to get where you need to go. And this is some of the rendered images of what that facility is proposed to appear, to look like. And we are extremely excited about that becoming, sort of that new iconic image as you cross the bridge coming into downtown. That'll be the first glimpse of what you'll see. So rather grand, but still in keeping with the architecture of the existing facility. We love the introduction of new urban plazas, so there will be outdoor spaces immediately adjacent to it that are not just parking lots, soft spots and tree lawns. And then also, the other portion of the project that you will be hearing more about is at the corner of Clinton and Monroe, which is now, relative to the importance of that site in downtown, is relatively underutilized and has become the location, the ideal location for the proposed new music venue and pre-function area, which will occupy the shape that you see there on the screen. So that becomes now a major attraction at a major corner, intersection in downtown, which will really bring people in and will give the public a lot of new, interesting activities. And we're excited to support that. Very edgy and bold architecturally, with rooftop areas and outdoor plazas, again, something that projects a very urban and progressive kind of design style and will no doubt be home to a lot of wonderful events. So just some images there of what that will be like. And I'm happy to move back to any of these and answer any questions.
Before we move on to talk about the liquor and lodging tax, because that's really what this is about, are there any questions with regard to the VBC? Mr. Keith, I think you had some for Mr. Maples.
Yes, and the board is here as well, correct? One number that we haven't talked about, and one I want to say thank you for sharing your story, is employment numbers. How many do you have currently?
Currently, we have 65 full-time employees and 300 to 400 part-time employees. That number varies. I would anticipate at least hiring possibly a half a dozen employees before this is done, new full-time employees, and probably another 30, 40 part-time employees.
Now, are the part-times done by an outsourced company? Or do you guys handle everything in-house?
A little bit of both. We outsource, and then we have our own part-time staff.
Got you. Now, we have, you know, one of your workers in common, real good kid. Lives in Cersei Homes. We work out together. And he has a very similar story to you. And I would employ you, encourage you, because this is going to be outside dollars, that you consider making more Steve's stories. I know it will probably, there's seasons to it all. And as this expansion comes, it's going to be a number of people who try and get jobs from outside the county, from math and so forth and so on. But there's a beautiful story of a man who lives in Cersei Homes. He shows up to work on time. You've talked about his work ethic. Talked about, you know, how he takes that money and puts it into his child, and he's a great worker. And I just really encourage you and the board to be very consistent in understanding the impact that you guys can have on giving more Mr. Maples opportunities. And I know, you know, this is going to be a task to manage as a director, but I just encourage you, as the employment opportunities come up, that you consider that for a number of the people who live a stone's throw from the development that's going to probably change their lives, so.
Yes, sir. We would certainly do that.
Thank you.
Councilman Keith, are there any other questions regarding the expansion of the VBC? Mr. Culver?
I defer to Councilman Kling. Go ahead, Councilman. He's a senior councilman.
I'm sorry, I didn't see Councilman Kling. Councilman Kling?
Okay. Great concept. Love the fact that this is pretty much being paid for by out-of-town visitors coming to Huntsville and everything. The proposal that we have, and I realize you hadn't gotten into actual contracts and everything, but basically you're talking about $41 million in new capital facilities, roughly being $7 million from the city, $34 from the VBC and the bonds and everything. What, I guess, how confident do you feel that you're going to be able to bring these projects that you're talking about within these budget numbers that you had mentioned to us previously?
I'm very confident that we can do that. I've been involved with all the expansions, and we've been on targeting on budget. We've also hired a company, along with our architect, we've got a company currently on board evaluating costs and looking at what this project would cost as we go forward. So every few weeks, we have an updated cost analysis. So we're making sure we're going to stay under budget.
So you might be able to do some tweaking if necessary, but it'll be roughly within those numbers you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Wow. Thank you.
Councilman Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. And, Mr. Maples, I too like Councilman Keith. And really, I've been knowing you for a long time and didn't know that was your story. That's incredible. And you probably should own the Civic Center. And on that same note, same note, since you're moving forward with all of these projects, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but sometimes the board members will bring certain characteristics that are more advantageous at different points in time in the development stage of new projects. So my question to you is, do you have a board that has all of the qualifications that you're looking for as it relates to your expansion? Now, I know that you've got a dynamic board, you have a very diversified board. But as you move forward with these projects, do you have everything that you need in your board?
I think we do. We have a seven-member board. They're a very active board. Meet once a month, and then there are several committee meetings during the month. And a couple of those board members have experience with builders and building projects. And I'm already seeing it with what we're doing now. So I'm very confident our board will be a big help to us.
Great, great. And your board, like I said, are an impeccable group of people. I've met with all of them, some individually, some collectively, and they're just great. So just keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President.
Other comments or questions? I have one comment, and that is, this is really a very visionary, really a very visionary project. Your story is the story of Huntsville. The growth that you've seen at the VBC is the growth that the city as a whole is experiencing. And that's why this project is so important right now, because we are a growing city. We are a city poised to be the largest city in Alabama. And the conferences and conventions that we can potentially attract are only going to benefit this city more and help it grow more, which is why the ordinance that we're considering tonight is so important. Not only is this a visionary project, we have a very visionary way to pay for it. So, Mr. Winters from Convention and Visitors Bureau, would you like to talk to us with regard to that?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and city council members, mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to come before y'all this evening. G D Riles, our president and CEO, sends her best. She could not be with us this evening, but I'm going to do my best in her place. We'll go through the rest of the-
Hit the down arrow, not the up arrow.
Oh, I'm going back. There we go.
Give everybody a sneak peek of all of this looks like.
All right, there we go. And, Madam President, as you just so with great timing said, Huntsville is poised to be the largest city in the state by 2025. 2025 sounds like a long time from now. It's eight years. So eight years from now, we are poised to be the largest city. And as has been stated, VBC is a major contributor to convention and visitor growth. The need for additional space is growing, just as our community does. We have so many more businesses here, so many more corporations, biotechnology, the FBI, aerospace, and they all have a demand for meeting space and event space. We are also trying to attract new business, new conventions, trade shows, meetings. We're also trying to attract new business, new conventions, trade shows, meetings. Here are just a, a few of the, the possibilities. Possibilities are always, you know, almost endless. Hotel business, hotels are, are doing well in the community, particularly well in the downtown area. Three of the indices they use are occupancy, average daily rate, ADR, or RevPAR, revenue per available room. You'll see those numbers are, are strong within the, the county and the city, particularly strong in the downtown area. Seventy-five percent occupancy in downtown Huntsville. Average rate is very healthy, a hundred and thirteen dollars and the revenue per available room is over eighty-five dollars in the, the downtown area. So it's good, good, strong business in, in Huntsville. So, how do we continue to compete for this business? We need to expand the Von Brown Center. The best part, as has already been mentioned, is this is all being paid for by out-of-town attendees, visitors, folks who are here for meetings, conventions, trade shows. The burden is not borne on our local taxpayers. Our guests are footing the bill. And so we, we get the benefit of the quality of life, much like the Huntsville Aquatic Center, and we also get a lot of activities here in the Von Brown Center with the, the increase, the expansion that is being put before you eventually. How do we stack up now? Because we're talking about lodging tax. Currently, we're at thirteen percent and there is a one-dollar surcharge and that is one dollar per room per night. If we compare that to other communities, Birmingham is considerably higher at nineteen percent, Mobile is higher at, at fourteen, Montgomery's fourteen percent plus two and a quarter, Knoxville and Chattanooga are also larger, are greater. But we also wanted you to see some of the smaller communities who are substantially more expensive, higher lodging tax rate. Andalusia, Bessemer, Lanette, of course Leeds and shorter. So what is the solution? A two percent increase to lodging tax and an additional one-dollar surcharge will raise the funds necessary to do the expansion. The benefits are multiple. Obviously, the expansion would bring more meetings, conventions, trade shows, but also indirectly restaurants, the, the airport, retail. Currently, the lodging and hospitality industry employs over fifteen thousand persons in Madison County, so they are a, a large employer. That number would obviously increase with a increased space at the, the Von Brown Center and then supporting facilities as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at, a two percent increase in the lodging tax itself and a one-dollar increase in the surcharge will have the, the funds needed for the expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Are there questions for Mr. Winters regarding the ordinance or for any of the VBC folks about the expansion?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Winters? Just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
And one, thank you for the presentation. When does this go to an effect? If somebody was to, let's say we pass this ordinance and maybe this is for legal with Trey, when would this, in a sense, go into effect if somebody wants to go and buy or purchase a hotel online?
As currently drafted, the ordinance goes into effect on one October. So the intent was to ensure that, that all the hoteliers had the opportunity to, to react to it, so we didn't want to put it in place tonight and immediately take effect. So we purposely put that lag time in place so that it would take effect with the next budget year.
Right. And I guess that's my, that leads into my second question. Do you guys have conversations with the hotelers, I guess they call them?
Yes, the Lodging Association and the Local Hospitality Association, both have endorsed this increase. They, they realize the importance of, of an enhanced and expanded Von Brown Center and they know that it will be helpful for the entire community, both folks coming in from out of town as well as locals.
Got you.
And I, I could add to that, you know, a portion of the existing lodging tax is actually focused on the recruiting of tourism business and the Hotel Association actually has a slot on the committee that, that evaluates every opportunity and actually makes a recommendation to council on how to allocate those dollars. So they, they play a very active role in the way in which we budget a portion of these taxes.
Wonderful. And I guess this is more of a professional opinion. Do you think that there's a potential, because there's probably about six in my district, motels that would just disappear, to sort of increase the, the quality of hotels that we might potentially get because of this increase? Does that make sense?
Um, I believe that's a, a, a good opportunity. You know, I've, I've been only thirty-one years with the Convention and Visitors Bureau where Mr. Maple's been forty-two at the, the Von Brown Center. I have seen quite a few changes in the, in the industry, but what, what normally happens is the hotels that, that come in, hotels, motels and all different types of, of lodging providers, they, they come in and they, they fulfill a need for folks who come in for various activities and, and events. So, yeah, there would be a, I would think, a very good opportunity.
So the price hike has never scared hotels from coming? The price hike brings a higher quality?
The, the, the price hike, the price hike again is borne by the attendees, by the visitors. It's collected by the, the hoteliers. So, you know, it's still up to the hoteliers on if they believe that the community is a good investment. The, the numbers that I showed you earlier, especially in the downtown area, do show that, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Winters? I have one. Will, we have focused a lot on the VBC expansion, again, a fabulous project. Is this, will this increase in the lodging tax and the room surcharge only be used or will it be earmarked for the VBC expansion or will it be available to pay for other projects as well?
I'm probably best suited to answer that question. So, um, all of our lo- lodging and liquor taxes, in terms of the way we manage it, in turn, in terms of the budgeting process, is focused on all of our facilities or organizations like the CBB that are engaged in the tourism business. So, uh, the, the industry that generates those dollars is where that money goes back into. So, uh, the, the annual operating and maintenance budgets for the VBC, the CBB, the Sports Commission, comes out of the, the original five percent portion of lodging tax. There's a one percent that was put in place some time ago for recreational facilities. It was primarily used for the expansion or the original construction of the tennis center. And so it's used for those types of tourism generating mostly sports and recreational facilities. There's a one percent that is focused on the recruitment and so we have a committee in place that, that uses that in order to, as the incentive package for conferences or other events that may come in. And so the CBB or the, or the Sports Commission are the primary organizations that tap into that. In this case, the, the two percent that's raised, that's, that's proposed here as well as the one-dollar surcharge, the ordinance specifies it must be used for capital projects, so it cannot be used for operations. It's used exclusively for capital and for, for projects at facilities that generate tourism. The vast majority of that will be required for this VBC expansion, but based on the modeling that we've done and, and working with the Finance Department, we've laid out about a five or six-year model, just so we have a good sense of where we expect it to go, there would be additional funds available to use for other capital projects. So the, the ordinance allows it to be used for capital at, at the VBC or other sports venues that generate tourism. So we would not want to use it for, you know, a local park that's just used by a neighborhood. It's really focused on those facilities that generate tourism.
Thank you. So while, so while this, this project is the impetus, potentially the entire city will benefit it with other attractions?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions or other discussion? Is there anyone else here? I, I know we've got some CBB board members and anyone else that you had planned to speak tonight?
Nobody else scheduled, but if, if council wishes to hear from any of the board members, they're certainly available for him.
Ready to vote.
All right, very good. Oh, Mayor Battle?
If I can weigh in on this. This is one of those questions of if we don't do it now, we stand to lose some things. When we start looking at AUSA, that has come here and been here two years now, this will be a third year coming up, they, they need the, they need the potential for growth. If we can show them that we are serious about growth and this will take three to four years to get built, they, they will stay with us and we'll be able to attract other conventions that we have not been able to. SMDC is one that fills out most of its space and this will give, give us another venue for more space there. The key to this is, this is setting us up for the future. This sets us up for convention, for visitors, for tourism, and it's three or four years before it's really fully into, into use, but it sets us up for the future and the future of what we want to see our, our downtown, but also our city be. And we will have lots of people who will visit the city because of this facility and this is the starting steps of, of getting our, our tourism moving forward to where it really needs to be.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. There's no other discussion, we'll move on. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. We look forward to seeing great things going forward. Thank you to all those who worked together on it. There's a party going on back there, which would be appropriate given who's here. Thank you. Thirteen B is resolution number seventeen dash four-five-seven, establishing a procedure for the City of Huntsville selection process for the appointment of the position of municipal court judge for the City of Huntsville Municipal Court. This was introduced at the June twenty-second, twenty-seventeen regular council meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr., by Mr. Keith. Discussion, Mr. Russell, this is your item. Would you like to?
Yes, it's, it's the same item that I introduced at the last meeting and it, as you know, well know that we've had work sessions on it, we've discussed it and I've taken everybody's comments and tried to include them as best I could and so I'm presenting it tonight for hopefully approval.
Madam President, is Mr. Barbara Thomas here?
Mr. Thomas here? Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
You have questions for Mr. Thomas? Mr. Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Mr. Thomas, a quick question. If this is approved, when does it take effect?
Well, as soon as it's approved, what the Human Resources Department would need is some type of requisition or request from the City Council to move forth with it.
So I guess my question is, do, do we have to set that as well on this resolution? That is, to be in effect for the position that is vacant? Or do we in effect say that this is going to be used after the position is filled?
What we, what we have in front of us is approval for this procedure. That's regardless of any action that will be taken later on. It's simply approving this process. Now, once this process is approved, it would certainly be a good guide. It would help us deal with some of the challenges that we had previously.
If we, if we approve this tonight, would this in effect be able to be posted to our jobs website, I guess, on, on the Huntsville City website?
Based upon the selection process, this procedure, once it's approved by City Council, if they elect to advertise for the municipal court judge position, that selection process will be attached to that advertisement.
Okay.
So what, what we have again, on the, the floor right now is consideration of cha- a change to the process itself and that process then would become part of any future hiring.
And Madam President, uh...
Are you, are you finished, Mr. Keith? Any other comments?
My, I have no problem approving it. My uncertainty is why would we approve something we probably won't use, if that makes sense? I would, I would, I guess I need understanding of, I like the process and I like what we have. Can we, can we make sure that it is the process used for this?
This is, this, this is the process for hiring municipal judge. Now, are you asking, a, a, an entirely separate issue would be...
I understand.
Are we going to use this process to hire some, another judge? While that is not what's on the table, I think an argument could certainly be made. It's been a year since we initiated the other process. There is no city department that would go a year with an ongoing hiring process. We have a member of the interviewing panel who is new in that year time. We don't even know if the people who originally applied are still available or interested, so there, an argument could certainly be made for re-engaging that process and using this process and I would be in favor of that.
And I guess I'm saying that to the work that Councilman Russell has done, I support and I think this is good, but also if it is not to be used, why would we approve it? Is my question. If it is not to be used currently and it's just to be used in the future, I just don't see the importance of doing all the work if not using it. But I, I understand we are here to approve this process alone. I just wanted that to be heard.
Uh, Mr. Culver, I believe you...
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. And my question certainly kind of piggybacks off Councilman Keith's inquiry, keeping in mind that we do have a motion that's been postponed seemingly indefinitely. Table probably would have been more advantageous. And my concern is whether or not we're going to take this particular ordinance and try to retroactively apply it to a process, to a decision process that's primarily been made and, and on the floor. So, you know, with that being said, I'm, I'm still not getting any definitive answers. I asked, posed this question before, Mr. Russell, if you remember, during the introduction of this ordinance, if it were to be something that is applicable to only future appointments or if it were to be retroactively applied. So with, with that being said, I, I don't, I don't feel good about it. Mark, I think you did a lot of great work in terms of putting it together. You made some changes that most of us have made, but I just don't feel comfortable with this particular ordinance at this particular time. And with that being said, I'm certainly not supporting it.
Perhaps just to clarify things, because it does seem to be sort of the element on the table, even though I've tried to separate the two. As the department head, I could fill out the request to have the municipal judge position advertised tomorrow. I have the paperwork to do that. This process would permit us to do it, particularly in light of the fact that it has been a year since the pro- since the position was advertised. We don't know if the original individuals who applied are available or interested. We also have a new individual on the panel who didn't have the opportunity to be part of that process. And again, we have a procedure now in place that helps us work through some of the challenges that we had previously. So I am prepared to do that if this procedure passes tonight.
Madam President? To me, this is kind of like driving to Atlanta. Do you go by way of Chattanooga or do you go by, by way of Birmingham? You're still going to get to the same destination and the bottom line is you've got five individual council members, they're going to make up their mind on whom they want to have serve in the vacancy. And I'm saying that with the assumption that the, the three strong candidates that we have from last summer are still interested. You know, of course, we could open it up and we could start all over from square one and we might have five applicants, including some or all of those three candidates. So I, I don't really care, I don't want to get too harped up on this. I do commend Mr. Russell. He, I think he did what I really like to see council members do, where somebody comes up with what they think is an idea and something about, hey, this would make things a little bit better. They roll up their sleeves, they do a project, they come up with something, they bring a proposal to the table, you know, and it's accepted, it's modified or it's rejected. So we can work on this. I'm open to Mr. Russell's thing, in fact, I have a few questions to ask, but the bottom line, it's going to be what three council members decide we're going to do. So we can, I guess, deal with this and then whatever three people want to do, four people want to do, five people want to do, you know, that would be the process. You know, I'm comfortable with the decision from, I made from last summer, but again, we do have a new person and certainly that new person should have, Councilman Keith should certainly have access to all the information and if you others feel that we need to go to square one, you know, that's certainly fine. The bottom line is who we're, who we're going to vote on. With that being said, could I ask a couple of questions about this?
Absolutely, because that is the, the, the agenda item is the procedure itself. So yes, please, questions regarding the procedure.
Okay, I just want to get, I just want to get some clarification on this. I guess, Mark, I'll address it to you.
Sure.
Four-point-oh applicants, four-point-oh, the number two, all applicants for the position of municipal court judge must be received by the City Human Resources Department on or before the closing date and time during the time period for advertisement. The number three, all applications which satisfy the qualification for the position of municipal judge will be forwarded to the president. Does that mean, I just want to make sure I understood this, and I believe it's spelled out, but just to clarify a hundred percent. The position of the Human Resource Department would be to make sure that the mechanics are being made in the application process. Is that correct? Where the, all of the applications have been filled out appropriately and then any supporting documentation are appropriate and then everything is forwarded to the president of the council and then the editorial process begins with, at the council level, not on the Human Resource Department? Is that the correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I kind of thought that. What happens if we get to a situation where we go through a process? Okay, I kind of thought that. Uh, what happens if we get to a situation where we go through a process? Three, four, or five council members decide they want to go with, uh, candidate B? Are we putting ourselves in an unfair position where candidate B is selected and then candidate, candidate B comes back and says, well, I'm not going to select, I'm not going to accept for the minimum position. I want to have it raised five thousand dollars or, you know, so many steps or something like that? Does that change the score as far as the council's concerned? Or does it, uh, are we allowed to negotiate with the leading candidate?
To answer your question like any other department, I think, once you've done your interview process and you establish through the nomination process who your candidate is, then the council will have to agree upon what salary they want to offer within the salary structure that is, that is established for that position. Now, I think you were offering, it might be some, you know, we're going to ask the candidate whether they accept this offer. And like any other department, we'll see if that's something they will agree to. But it's the council decision to come within a salary package that meets within the guidelines of the salary structure.
And if you look at eight point five, that actually is within the procedure itself.
Yes, ma'am.
What I was getting at, do, does the council have the prerogative to say, well, this was offered to candidate B? And let's say it's like a three-two vote. And then one of the three says, well, uh, when I gave my vote, it was in good faith for it to be at the minimum level. And if this person says they want a higher level, then I reserve the right to re, you know, resend my vote and go with somebody who's going to accept. I'd rather have couns-, uh, candidate A at the minimum level versus candidate B at the higher level. You see what I'm getting at?
Councilman King, of course, I can't speak on behalf of the council, but, but I would, would surmise that, that a contract would be our, our resolution. Something be brought before the council with all those terms worked out at that time.
Again, if you look at eight five, it says if a nominee receives a majority vote from the city council, that means that they will be nominated. Then the city council will need to adopt a resolution establishing the terms of appointment, step within the salary grade, et cetera. So the council could, at that point, not pass that resolution.
Or if the candidate refused that salary, then we may decide to offer somebody else.
Madam President, if I may?
Mr. Keith?
And I, and with respect to what you said, I, I, I know you want to separate out. I think it's a little tough on a situation like this, because it's a little convoluted in the process. But to what, uh, Councilman Culver said and Councilman Kling said, um, I guess my question is, this, this sort of serves as a wonderful opportunity, maybe just for me. If people have already made their mind up, I'm just saying that, not, you know, pragmatically. If people have already made their mind up and those applicants return to, you know, the application process, can, is there, is there a way that we can, I guess, guesstimate if we go through this process, what the timeframe would be, in a sense, for me? From application, four weeks, as I think I read, and three, three?
Four weeks of advertisement.
No, four weeks of advertisement, interview. Can you give a guesstimate? Because this issue has plagued me, of how soon you believe a vote would come on a judge?
It's kind of difficult to say. I mean, you're looking at, at four weeks, a minimum of advertising. Or the council can elect to shorten that time. It's, it's your decision. But we put in the procedures, four weeks. After the announcement closed, there would be some type of interview process set up that could last maybe a week or two. And then after that is made, then you draft, with legal's help, of course, uh, some type of resolution to approve a candidate after a nomination process. Depending on when that fall, it could be another, one council or another council. So you're looking at anywhere from six to maybe eight weeks, somewhere in that timeframe. That's just an estimate.
And Madam President, I may add, it, it usually depends on the council. And that's usually where the delay comes, is getting all five council members together with our busy schedules and, and the opportunity to interview. And so it's, it's not an easy question to answer. The four week, I think, is, it's not set in stone. It's recommended. But if, if the council chooses to, uh, cut time, that would be somewhere where we could modify the rules to cut time.
Yes, sir.
You might point out that council can call meetings, special called meetings, and get this process moved very quickly if they wanted to. If they wanted to shorten the time to two weeks and then have, have a whole week of meetings where we did the interviews and got them over with and voted on them. You could, you could definitely shorten it to three weeks if you wanted to. But it, it would, it, it all gets down to council's will.
It, it also comes down to making sure that we are, that we are serving the public. Because if in the process of rushing the process, uh, we, we limit our, our, our selection, um, or those individuals who might apply, or don't give the council opportunity to do the due diligence they need to do, then we also create a different problem for ourselves. So it, we're looking at probably eight to ten weeks, um, but which could be shortened in a best-case scenario.
Last question, and maybe Trey can answer this, or you can, Madam President. If we do not approve this, what is the next step? Is there a next step?
As I understand it, we had some meetings ago, a, a motion, um, on the floor, which was adopted to await the outcome of a, a procedure or proceeding that was in Montgomery.
Understood.
Then we would decide to move forward at that point, so.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Mr. Culver?
So I heard you say that because it's been almost a year, then actually, it would be a year, I believe, in September, September, October, somewhere in that timeframe. There are several jobs that I've applied for. One was a police officer with the City of Huntsville that took over a year for me to get hired. Subsequent to that, the FBI, um, it took probably a year and a half to two years before I received an offer that I so kindly rejected because my then-wife was pregnant and didn't want to move. So what we have on the floor now, in, in my opinion, is, is still good. I, I, I believe this probably rests with Mr. Keith. Uh, not to put you on the spot, Councilman, but, um, if you, uh, have questions and concerns, then you certainly deserve to have that right and option to speak with any of those candidates. And/or if you elect to start this process anew, uh, that, that would be your volition as well, in conjunction with two other council members. To start this process over, in my opinion, it serves no purpose. It's not fair to the people who have already participated and who have placed. It, it actually is moot, because while this document, Mr. Russell, uh, could be a great tool to use, it is not necessary. I mean, this council, this body, since nineteen and fifty-nine, keeping in mind municipal courts were created by statute in nineteen eighty-three. But in nineteen fifty-nine, um, we have operated the way that we operated all the way up through this last judicial appointment, in a similar way. And that is the legislative body that's tasked, which is this council, that's tasked by local ordinance, as well as state law, has the authority to appoint a presiding judge, I, I'm sorry, a municipal judge. And the mayor has the sole discretion to appoint from those selections the presiding judge. So do we have to have this? Of course not. Is it a good tool? It could be if it is used, uh, in the right way. But I'm, I'm going to be very honest with all of you. I, I'm not supporting it because I have concerns that it's a tool that is going to be misused. And, and that's just where I am. I mean, you know, even in law, and Counselor, I know you will share this view. A law could be a good law on the surface. It could be constitutional on the surface. But it could be unconstitutional as applied. So this document, Mr. Russell, can be a good document if it's used correctly. But if it is abused and misused, it, it may not be so good. So, so with, with that being said, I'm, I'm sticking to my guns to not support it. Haven't talked with any of my colleagues on the council about it, but you all make your own decision. But that's where I stand on that. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I certainly disagree with my colleague. I think, uh, after the last way it was handled, the council definitely needs a process. And if, uh, certainly tried to work this where all council members had the opportunity to, to, uh, to share ideas and, and certainly consider anything Mr. Culver had, had suggested. And if it's unconstitutional, the council, uh, I guess wishes it to be that way. And so the, without having a process, three members of the council can do what they want. With a process, three members of the council, I guess, can do what they want. But I think the process will be beneficial. So I'm going to support it. And then there'll be other questions of when it goes into effect. But tonight, I think we need a process.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Russell. And I think this process itself is probably the best argument for reopening, or re-advertising the position and beginning anew. We had no process last time. We were making it up as we went along. And in fact, a couple of the, the actions that we took last time are questionable, uh, perhaps probably more so than having a procedure and would be more likely to be challenged in court. So I, I, I like the procedure that we have here. It clarifies, uh, the, it, it puts a procedure in place, not only for us to use in reopening this position, but in moving forward for any other future vacancies that take place. So it helps us now and it helps us in the future. And I will support it.
Madam President, if I could digress for a minute.
Yes, Mr. Culver. Yes, you do, Mr. Culver.
So I, I take offense to your last comment. Um, Mr. Russell and I were tasked with putting not just a procedure in place, but we... There was nothing questionable about the process that we utilized. And we got input. Remember now, I want to take us back. Remember, we talked about public interviews. I, I believe that was a suggestion. We agreed to that. We did that. We, we, we made all of the changes that all of us espoused. There was nothing, now, go back to last year. There was nothing about that selection process that all of us didn't discuss, not in private, about who the candidate, but I'm speaking only to the process. We took everything under, under advisement and we made the necessary adjustments. That process was not flawed at all. Now, maybe the candidate that certain people wanted, you know, didn't rise to the top. But that doesn't mean the process is flawed. Uh, there was nothing clandestine. We did it open with the public's invitation, with candidate's invitation, with anybody who wanted to attend. So I, I, I have to beg to differ on that. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Are there any comments? Mr. Keith?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to sort of set the record straight in that I understand the perspective of my colleagues, but I am pragmatic to my own perspectives. And, um, in every sense of the word, we can in, you know, put this process, pass it, and everybody can still come to the consensus of the person that they supported before. But I have no before person. And, um, I believe that this process offers me an opinion, and I guess, in the process. And I know it is another drag out of eight weeks. And I, it is an unfortunate situation that I, you know, am naive to in a large sense. But I just would like to urge that we start this process as soon as possible. And then if this is passed, stand by this in the process. And at the end of the day, the vote still comes down to the person that the individual supports. But it gives me a better foundation of my own involvement in selection, rather than being given people to select from.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Mr. Kling?
If, uh, this thing doesn't pass, um, I don't, I'm not under any illusion that this issue's going to get resolved within the next eight weeks. If, uh, it'll help, I have no problem. Uh, we can go back to square one. Again, I feel like I went through the process and I'm comfortable with my process and with the input that I, uh, had received, uh, from the outgoing presiding judge. The, uh, bottom line is, it's not the process. It's going to be the final vote. And every council member, no matter what process or what bells and whistles we have along the way, the bottom line is how each council member, you know, makes a decision on he or she wants to vote and who they think would be the best person to do the job. So, uh, you know, I'll support this. Uh, whether we go back to square one or whether this takes effect for the future, I don't really care much one way or another. But if it'll help Devin a little bit, uh, to feel like he's back at square one, that we're back at square one altogether, instead of him trying to catch up on what we've already, what the other four have already gone through the process on, you know, I have no problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Are there any other comments? All in favor of approving the appointment of the, the selection procedure for the appointment of the position of municipal court judge? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, they're telling me a roll call vote is required. We will proceed with a roll call vote. Mr. Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Mr. Culver?
Nay.
The chair votes aye. The selection procedure is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
We will move on to fourteen, new business items for introduction. These items are for introduction only and will be considered at the July twenty-seventh regular council meeting. Fourteen A is the introduction of an ordinance annexing twenty-one point seven zero acres of land lying on the west side of Balch Road and north of Bordeaux Lane. Fourteen B is introduction of an ordinance annexing fifteen point four seven acres of land lying on the east side of Old Be Cove Road and north of Ridge Point Drive. Fourteen C is an introduction of an ordinance annexing six point three nine acres of land lying on the north side of Highway seventy-two West and west of Providence Main Street. Fourteen D is the introduction of an ordinance to declare certain equipment as surplus and to be sold at public auction. Again, these will, we, these will be considered at the July twenty-seventeenth, twenty-seventh regular council meeting. Moving on to fifteen, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items anyone wishes to have held for separate consideration?
Madam President, I wish to hold fifteen L, fifteen O, and fifteen R.
Are there any other items anyone wishes to hold for separate consideration? The chair asks to hold, in addition, fifteen G, fifteen M, fifteen S.
Could you say those again, please, Madam Chair?
So altogether, fifteen G, fifteen L, fifteen M, fifteen R, fifteen S.
And I wish to hold O.
And O, thank you.
Thank you.
Fifteen R, fifteen S. All right, we'll move on. Fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations for radar signs. Fifteen C is ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six-five-nine by changing the authorized personnel strength in the various departments and funds. Fifteen D is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number sixteen dash six-five-nine by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. Fifteen E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the low bidders meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. Fifteen F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of Huntsville and Tennessee Captioning LLC. Fifteen H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Neo-Gov. Fifteen I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Roger Martin Farms for the lease of farmland in Cummings Research Park. Fifteen J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Roger Martin Farms for the lease of farmland in the southwest corner of Capshaw Road and Walter Anna Highway. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for relocation of utility facilities on private or public right-of-way work for Martin Road between Old Jim Williams and Zert Road, project number sixty-five dash ten dash RD zero seven. Fifteen N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and J.C. Cheek Contractors, Inc. for periodic bid for, bid for traffic striping and marking. Twenty fifteen, project number sixty-five dash fifteen dash SP four-eight. Fifteen P is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke service first bank letter of credit number twenty-nine six-two-one for Heritage Brook subdivision phase three. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for a transportation alternatives project between the state of Alabama and the City of Huntsville regarding the Dry Creek Greenway. Fifteen T is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Madison County Auto Parts, Inc. Fifteen U is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employment, employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Carol English. Fifteen V is a request for authorization to advertise and fill six landscape maintenance worker positions. Fifteen W is a request for authorization to advertise and fill three landscape maintenance lead worker positions. Fifteen X is a request for author... lead worker positions. 15X is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one position of animal services clerk, regular full-time, grade nine. 15Y is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of senior right-of-way inspector, grade 16, at higher than minimum if necessary. 15Z is a request for authorization to fill one accounting technician, three position, at higher than minimum if necessary.
Madam Chairman, I move for consolidation. Approval of 15A through 15F, 15H through 15K, 15N, 15P through Q, 15T through Z.
Second by the chair. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and those items are approved. We will move, now move on to 15G. 15T is G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve a memorandum of agreement among the City of Huntsville, Alabama, Madison County, Alabama, and the Huntsville-Madison County Airport Authority for providing funding for professional services in support of the future operation of a reentry site at Huntsville-Madison County Airport. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Mr. Davis, could you please share with us the details?
Be happy to, Madam President. Council members, you may recall that we had a previous agreement come for this council about this time last year. It was mid-June of last year to do a preliminary study to determine if the Huntsville International Airport could be certified by the FAA as a reentry landing for the eastern portion of the United States for spacecraft, either by NASA or commercial flight, to reenter into restricted airspace. That came back very positively. So we are before you, along with Madison County and the Huntsville Airport and some local partnerships, to finish that report and become a certified reentry site for the commercial and government operations. So to give you a little background of that, the Huntsville-Madison County Airport has secured funding from University of Alabama Huntsville in an amount of just under $390,000. The Alabama Department of Transportation at $100,000, and the Alabama Military Stability Foundation for $50,000. The balance that match would be between the City of Huntsville and Madison County to finish and complete this. There'll be public hearings if you vote to move forward to finish this. So the public will be very much engaged as any federal aid project. Our has a, what you will be approving tonight is up to an amount. It would not exceed this amount, but it, there's a possibility it could be much less than this. We'll just see as we get in through FAA comments, as we continue to submit the reports through Teledyne Brown Engineering to be completing that. So the maximum amount would be $390,444. Like I said, that is the cap. We know it will not be any more than that, but could come in much less than that. So we'll pay the invoices up to that amount of our cost share.
And Madam President, I might mention, this is for the Dream Chaser, Sierra Nevada Dream Chaser project, more specifically, which Aerojet Rocketdyne is making the engines for, which is a, one of the companies that just located here with 700 jobs. This opens up a whole new market when you start doing low Earth orbit reentry vehicles and landing here in Huntsville, Alabama. You know, it will open up a market for both scientific experiments and for some of the space experiments that we have to do as, you know, as a country or as a world. And it also gives us that, that place where we need to be, where we actually do propulsion that sends rockets into, into space and into low Earth orbit, but also will bring us back. And we have the place to land once you come back. So it's a very unique place in the history of the world.
And as the mayor very well mentioned, as far as Sierra Nevada, but also becoming certified also helps Marshall Space Flight Center have solidarity in the space programs as we move forward, whether it be government-funded or commercial funding, as far as being a certified reentry point of having payloads that can be picked up or brought back here. So it helps both our private industry, but also Marshall.
There are questions for Mr. Davis. Would make one comment. I was down at the beach this past week and was in a convenience store, and there was a stack of mobile press registers sitting on the, on the desk, on the counter. And people were picking them up and walking out of the store. And I noticed that that front page, top of the fold, there was a big old picture of the Dream Chaser. It caught my attention, and the title was "Our Place in Space" or something like that. Of course, I picked it up, and it was all about Huntsville. And the work that we're doing here, and the Dream Chaser's coming here, and also the propulsion work that was being done. So it's interesting to me, you know, the rest of the state is seeing the good things that are happening here, and Dream Chaser is part of that.
I think it's critical to keep our place in history that we've always had in space to continue to be aggressive and progressive in our community.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to, thank you, Mr. Davis. Move on to 15L. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and S&amp;M.E. Inc. for Cecil Ashburn Drive Widening Project Number 65-14-RD07.
Move to approve.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Culver.
Madam President, I just want to get Ms. Martin to tell us what this amendment is, and then also just kind of go over the schedule for the public's benefit.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, sir. It's my pleasure to bring before you a modification tonight. And this came about as a result of our public involvement meeting that we held last September. We were so focused on Cecil Ashburn and making improvements to it, they brought to our attention that there is some congestion at Old Be Cove Road. So what this modification does is it includes additional design and surveying services to add double left-turn lanes westbound from Old Be Cove to Cecil Ashburn, as well as a right-turn lane heading eastbound on Cecil Ashburn to Old Be Cove.
And Ms. Martin, I appreciate you listening to the public. I happen to be in a lot of those conversations and was taking it really hard. And I appreciate you all changing that for them. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. 15M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the City of Huntsville, the City of Madison, and the Limestone County Commission for Resurfacing of Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road from Mooresville Road to Burgreen Road. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. This is a joint funding agreement, as you mentioned, between the City of Madison, the City of Huntsville, and Limestone County. And it is for four and a half miles of resurfacing on Huntsville-Brown's Ferry Road. It goes from Mooresville Road to Burgreen Road. And it is jointly funded because each of the cities and county is about one-third of the segments. So the Huntsville share is about 35% of that section, and it's $271,964.
So we're used to doing joint projects, as we saw with the Dream Chaser funding. But in this case, it's necessitated because the road itself is in different jurisdictions.
That is correct.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15O is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a project development agreement among the City of Huntsville, Madison County, Alabama, the Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville, and Blue Origin, Alabama, LLC. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam President. Council members, we've got yet another industrial development project agreement to bring for you tonight for your consideration. And it deals with Blue Origin, the recent announcement of that in Cummings Research Park. So I put together some slides to give you some, some background, then I'll take any questions you may have. So the project overview, the project will consist of two development phases. New jobs are up to 400. The development agreement guarantees 342 of those 400 jobs. Has a guaranteed capital investment of $200 million in two phases. The average annual payroll to the community for the project exceeds $27 million annually. And the average annual full-time employment wage is just under $75,000 per job. Phase one, the capital investment would be $90 million, with a guaranteed 265 jobs associated with phase one. And then phase two would come online once, pretty much immediate, the way it would be phased in, from an operations standpoint, of an additional $110 million capital investment and additional final 77 jobs to put the BE4 engine in production. So local project assistance, as always, you know that we work with the state in providing local incentives, but we always protect our taxpayer and the general public in anything that we provide to bring jobs to our area. So the City of Huntsville would provide a 46-acre site in Cummings Research Park to Blue Origin. The Madison County Commission and the City of Huntsville would reimburse Blue Origin $1 million, $500,000 each between each entity. For site construction expenses, aid to construction, bringing utilities to the site, and putting them in the right size for a facility of this magnitude. But that would be a reimbursement upon completion of the facility and occupancy. So they would have to place the project, what we call place the project in the service. So they are producing a product, and then they would ask for this reimbursement. So they would make all their capital investment upfront before we make any payment at all. Both the site grant and construction assistance funds would be protected under a 10-year, what we call a performance-based mortgage. Should Blue Origin fail to satisfy the annual minimum full-time employment value and/or the minimum $36 hourly wage, then the company is required to submit a mortgage payment. So think of that payment being, there's $6 million, the land, we've valued it five plus the million. It's a 10-year performance period. So if you divided that by 10, each year that they failed to make, just similar to what we did with Polaris and Remington and GA Aviation, they'd make that payment. This one is a little unique because of its magnitude and the type of industry they in. We also have what we call a relocation clause. Should Blue Origin, once they are in production, relocate any FTEs, full-time employment, or programs at this Huntsville facility, meaning those production should leave Huntsville within that 10-year performance period, then the company will be required to make a full reimbursement payment of $6 million. So no prorated. So year nine, they left, they're going to reimburse us for full cost. So the project location is in the northwest quadrant of Explorer Boulevard, just north of Columbia High School and Farrell Road, and just west of Hudson Alpha, that you can see there on the screen. And then this is a proposed rendering of the facility. Naturally, they will follow all of our zoning regulations and go through the CRP Board Architectural Review Committee to finalize that. But it's predominantly going to be a large building, but with a lot of glass, and be something, be iconic. They want to be iconic in Research Park. As I said, it's a, it's a very lean development agreement. It's very clear and straightforward. So I'll answer any questions you may have.
And Madam President, if I could say, we've got 46 acres in it. We originally bought that 46 acres to provide jobs. And that's what this is doing. By using that 46 acres, we're using it to produce jobs and make jobs for the area. Blue Origin is the last of the propulsion companies that I think we can land here. We already have Aerojet Rocketdyne. We have Blue Origin. We are NASA's Center of Propulsion at Marshall Space Flight Center. We have several other companies, Teledyne Brown, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, all working in the propulsion industry. This kind of gives us, whatever you want to call it, the trifecta, or whatever you want to call it, that we are now the propulsion center of excellence for the United States. And by default, that may mean that we're the propulsion center of excellence for the world. That was very important to us. When they first came to us, we went and took a group down to see the governor and told the governor, this was very important to our community because it does give us all the elements that we need. They'll be, we're doing the BE4 engine right now. The next engine that they've got to do is an engine to take us, what NASA's working on, the SLS, take us into deep space. And they'll be working on a deep-space engine. The next engine that they'll work on is one that's faster and stronger and works harder and has more lift that will take man to Mars. This gives us a long-term employment perspective for the, for the community, puts us in a position where nobody else can match us in, in the world, and gives us jobs for a long, long time. Blue Origin just kind of caps off what we've been trying to do here and works very well for our job strategy for years to come.
Thank you, Mayor. Battle questions. Mr. Russell?
Madam President, Mr. Davis liked the structure, liked the clawbacks and things built into them. Explain to me, I remember there was some caveat on when they would start, or when they would build a factory. Can you explain that and how that relates to giving them the land?
Absolutely. It's a very good question. So the way we currently have this project structured is it's subject to a contract with ULA, United Launch Alliance, which they are in determining their next engine to replace the Russian current engine that they purchased. However, in talking with Blue Origin officials, the BE4 engine is also their engine for their own chassis, similar to Sierra Nevada with their, and SpaceX and others. So we feel really confident that it will be brought under construction. So the timing is kind of dependent, but until they make that request, we will not transfer any ownership of the Research Park land. So we're protected in that right. So should they come with plans and start constructions, when our transaction will take place.
Okay, thank you. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
Madam President, and back on that point, I guess my question is, is this job relocation or is this job creation? Is it contingent upon them hiring people from here, that number that you had?
Predominantly, yes. They currently have a facility in Kent, Washington, that's producing a few of the BE4 engines. But it's at capacity, and they're using those for their own chassis. So this is a brand-new facility for them. It's a growth for them. It's not really a relocation. So there's, this is 100% new growth for Blue Origin.
Got you. So the jobs that they're, that they're going to hire here will be brand-new jobs, and those will be calculated, I guess, in that number of 36?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Other questions? Mr. Culver?
Just a comment. Of course, I was extremely elated, Mayor, when we had the press conference regarding the Blue Origin. I'm just elated with all of the work that has gone into this. And Mr. Davis, I've said it to you privately, but the work that you do for the city, and I know this is in conjunction with the chamber and all of the state US senators, and state senators and representatives, and local council members, and local mayors, all three mayors. I guess I've made Adele Strong a mayor now, county commissioner. But this is just another example of the kinds of work that you guys are doing. And we are certainly, our communities, when I say our communities, I'm referring to all 13 counties in North Alabama, and a few counties in Southern Tennessee, that will be the beneficiaries of this particular company coming into Huntsville. And I'm so thankful that they're in District Five. Dr. Robinson?
And I could not agree more. We're very fortunate, have phenomenal leadership and a great economic development team. This, you know, with a company like Blue Origin, and the ownership and who owns Blue Origin, this was highly competitive. And there were a lot of peer cities that offered some really creative ways to try to just get this name in their community. So I'm very proud of the team that I played a very small part of. So thank you.
Thank you.
You have a lot of really exciting things going on in District Five, don't you?
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask a question on behalf of some members of the public. You've covered it, but I want to put it in terms that we here expressed, here in these council chambers, we have been accused of giving the city away. We're giving away 46 acres, valued at $5 million, if I was seeing.
Correct.
Read those slides correctly. Are we giving the city away, and if so, why?
No, you know, as, and I should have put the slide in, and I can bring that later at a council meeting. We were going to do this without a presentation, but decided at late to really publicly show this, without just trying to verbally ask the community to digest this. But, you know, the payback for this is about two years. I mean, $27 million of new payroll in the community means people are buying more houses, people are buying cars, they're eating out. So the multiplier effect, for a $5 million incentive to bring a project like this to your community, the way we've been able to structure it, there were cities that offered much, much larger than that. But I think it's a testament to our education system, the environment that we've created here in Huntsville and a workforce, that we were able to get a project like this without just what we call in the economic development field, going and buying the project. We did not do that. I think we've got a very, very tight development agreement that is very stiff penalty should you not produce. So the taxpayer is well, well protected in that, plus a great return on investment. And the other thing is, is kind of like I say in some projects that I bring before you, at times, you've got to protect what you're known for. And if you let some of that slip out of your community, and that happens two or three times, you're not known as a propulsion center of excellence. So you've got to kind of defend your turf in some projects. And this is one of those where, not knowing how much the commercial project growing, you know, used to, space was all about NASA. But now you've got private entities doing as much work as NASA does. So we've got to make sure we're capturing that, too.
And we have had other contracts that have had clawback provisions in them. Have we ever had to exercise?
No, not in my 17 years.
Yeah. And let me say, this is in my nine years, 10 years almost. As we have looked, every project that we have had, that we've had incentive, we've had clawbacks to make sure that we protect the taxpayer. Over around three dozen communities competed for this. And this was highly sought after because lots of communities wanted to have Blue Origin in their community. And our community won. And won because we have a research park that we bought land in years and years ago. And the reason we bought that land was to provide jobs. And today, we're providing jobs with it. And we... jobs. And today, we're providing jobs with it. And we worked very hard, the whole team did. I think the whole team was on the phone up until, I mean, the announcement was Monday and I think it was 11:45, we had the last email that finished out the deal on Sunday night. So this has been a hard-fought battle. Chip Cherries back there from the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce did a wonderful job, but it was a team effort. And it was a team effort. The county just passed their resolution to provide their funding and they were involved. So everybody kind of stepped up and did what they were supposed to. And we won a competition over, you know, 30 to 35 communities across the nation who are very good, high-tech communities. And we should be very proud of that.
And I want to say kudos to the mayor. I actually was on vacation when we were, and kept telling my wife, this is the last conference call I'll be on and then we'll have some time. And Sunday was about four in a row. And so I kind of stayed by myself that Sunday. But we were down to one item that was a protection for our citizens. And we had a corporate attorney and we were going through items. And he made a comment to the mayor. He said, you know, would you really hold up an announcement Monday over this one item? And the mayor said, absolutely. I got elected to protect taxpayers and bring jobs. I'm going to protect the taxpayer first. And we got through it. You know, he realized how serious we was and how important it was. And kudos to the mayor because the phone got really silent. But we got it done, like the mayor said, just a little before 11:00 PM Sunday night. So good job, Mayor.
It's a great project, great team, and we look forward to great things. Thank you. All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 15R. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement one for construction between the State of Alabama and the City of Huntsville regarding project STPAA-AL61900, improve pedestrian facilities at five points located near Holmes Avenue, Pratt Avenue, and Andrew Jackson Avenue in Huntsville, Alabama. Project reference number 100045139.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver.
Dr. Robinson, Madam President, I have questions. Ms. Martin certainly liked this project. And I know that several of my constituents have asked questions and y'all have met with them over the years. It seems like we've been working on this. Have, can you briefly describe the project, then ensure me that everyone has been heard?
Yes, sir. You know, as you mentioned, this is a continuation of our original five points that we did, streetscape improvements at five points at the intersection. And so it has been on the books for a while. And we went down to Aldott recently and the administration fought to get this back on the books and funded. And so what it is, is it's improvements, streetscape improvements, has decorative lighting, sidewalks, furniture, as well as some additional parking. And the limits are on Long Holmes Avenue from Andrew Jackson to Dement and along Dement Avenue from Holmes Avenue back to Andrew Jackson.
And you have met with the businesses and listened to their concerns?
Yes, sir. We did make some modifications to the design to accommodate some additional public parking in the area.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have to assure you, as much as we want to say we have talked to everybody, there will be one person who did not get the word. And we will apologize upfront right now because it's always the case, you don't think you have everybody covered and there's always one person. So, but Ms. Martin has done a great job trying to make sure that she has gotten everybody.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Any other comments? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville-Madison County Marina and Port Authority. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Councilman Russell. Mr. McNeese, would you please share with us the details?
Yes, ma'am. This is a partnership effort between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville-Madison County Marina Port Authority, which is Dido Landing. It's an effort for the City of Huntsville to partner with Dido Landing to do some infrastructure improvements, that being mast grading and putting in culverts, slope paved headwalls, riprap, that sort of thing for their overall master plan. If anybody's been to Dido Landing lately, that's in the master plan for the growth that they're having. This is phase one of that particular, implementing that master plan, which is getting some new campgrounds down, putting some new roadways in. Ultimately, they're going to have a wonderful improvement to that whole facility, that being hiking trails, bike trails, zip lines. It's just a wonderful improvement to what we have down there in Dido Landing. But we'll be assisting with this particular agreement to do the majority of the mast grading in phase one.
So did I hear you say this is the roads as well as the campgrounds?
Yes, yes, ma'am. This is some, the infrastructure improvement, which is the roads getting to each one of the angled parking, if you will, for each one of the campgrounds. We're moving a lot of dirt, a lot of dirt's onsite. There will be no off-site borrow. I think we're digging three ponds, three little small lakes onsite. So we'll have a lot of borrow generated for building up the roadway.
And those-
We're going to cap it off with some dense grating base. I apologize.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Kind of do some sub-grade stabilization to be, to have it ready for future bidding of the curb and gutter and asphalt in the future.
And those ponds and building up the road is important to deal with not flooding. They don't have flooding down there. They have water containment challenges.
That's correct. That is correct.
So that will, so we're going to be addressing a number of issues. One is access, one is expanding campground, and the other is dealing with water containment issues.
Absolutely.
Great project. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the new business items. We will move on to item 16, legal department items and transactions. 16B is vacation of right-of-way. 16B1, resolution consenting to the vacation of a portion of a right-of-way located at 6599 Highway 431 Owens Crossroads.
Move to approve?
Second by the chair. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is approved. 16B2 is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of a right-of-way located at 6599 Highway 431 South Owens Crossroads.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second, second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is approved. This, we will move now to the non-roster communications from the public. Thank you all for your patience. If you would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name, address, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. My name's Mike Ennis. I live at 1106 Governor's Drive Southeast. I'm here tonight about the proposed eastbound lane improvements. And I've got this map here, the aerial photo from the city. And it shows these little lines that better take-
Can you speak into the microphone? We're having a hard time hearing you up here. Just pop it up there.
It shows these little lines that you'd be taking part of the front yard of some of these people, my house being the principal one. But it's kind of like if you look at a globe, the difference between Huntsville and New York City is about like that. And so this is, if it's in your front yard, it's different. This is a house that was built in 1948 by the Hutchins family. They had the lumber company. And it's on two lots. My wife and I purchased this house in 2000. We immediately had eminent domain as we were closing. 2012, we had it again. And now we're having it again. It's proposed again. And we found out about it because there was a TV crew in our front yard here about three or four weeks ago. And that's how we found out about it. But what it does is, the proposal will take out a bunch of trees. And there's, I counted them, there's 22 trees that are over 50 years old that it will take out, which is the sound barrier. It's football Saturday every morning on Governor's Drive, as most of you know. So they were going to add two more lanes, which will make it closer to my house. We had, we bought a house in Twickenham and were redoing that house. And part of the deal was, I was going to sell this house. Well, if you take out 14 to 18 feet of your front yard, the value is not going up. And so what we're proposing is, or what we're hoping is, and Mr. Russell introduced me to Mr. Davis, so he clarified some questions for me. But my hope is that we'd rethink this because it looks to me like we're just pushing an intersection of congestion on up to, I forget the old church that's up on Governor's.
Unity.
But it's going to make it even more congested right there, which will just back it up down here anyway. And so my hope is that we'll rethink this, or you can buy my house at the appraised value, it'd be great. But seriously, I just wanted to bring this up. And I know this is a little ways off. And I would like to meet with Mr. Kling. I think we had talked by phone. I don't know if you remember. But I just like to bring this up, let you know our thoughts. And it reminds me, you guys are doing a great job. All the stuff you do, I'm really impressed. Never been to a council meeting before. A lot of great stuff happening here in the city I need nothing of, which, I'm just a citizen. My wife's five generations here in Huntsville, graduated Huntsville High. I'm an immigrant from Tuscaloosa County. But we've been, we've been living in Huntsville since 2000. But her family's been here since the 1800s. I liken this to all the things that you have to do. I liken it to minor surgery. And minor surgery is when it's on somebody else.
Mr. Ennis, your time is up.
Yeah. But this is my front yard, so it's major to me. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much for being here. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Madam President?
Oh, Mr. Kling.
Okay. Kathy, what process was there as far as public notification to the residents? Wasn't there some communication that took place on this proposal?
Other than the council item that we took to start the design, the only public notice that we'll have is during the appraisal process when we go out there with the surveyors and then the land appraisers when they come through.
Any other questions, Mr. Kling? Anyone else who would like to address the council? Ms. Reed?
Okay. It's time for me. I want to thank you, Mr. Kling, for giving me the room to grow Von Braun Civic Center book expansion. Thank you. I still see need to room to grow. And I want to tell you, thank you tonight for using some of your common sense when you did pass that Von Braun Civic Center. But I also would like to ask you, they need more room. They're going to get landlocked. I would like to see that you all give everybody property. You put 22 million in Aquatic Center and they're going to tear down a scrub center and the other aquatic center. And we're going to give that to City Center. We're going to give it to them. I don't see them down here telling us they're going to pay for something that we do for them. But these people, thank goodness, Von Braun Civic Center, brought a proposal in here and told you how they're going to pay for it and they're expansion. Now, that is good. I don't see these big developers are doing anything like that. We can give it to them, hand it to them, and hope we get it back somehow. Don't turn that light on yet. I've not been up there yet. Anyway-
You still have almost two minutes.
Huh? But anyway, I'm asking you to give the Coke plant to the Von Braun Civic Center before they get landlocked. And it's my understanding, according to the master plan that you all have passed, I pray to God you didn't pass it and start working on it, that you are going to build City Hall over around the Coke area? No? But whatever. You need to keep it right here on these two pieces of property, in my opinion. But you need to give the Von Braun Civic Center the Coke plant and let them build a huge convention center because I see Stone Middle Campus 805 competing with the Von Braun Civic Center. And I got a real problem with that. I stopped in there one day and saw it crowded, crowded, crowded. And I walked up and asked them what kind of meetings is going on up there someday. And they are competing with the Von Braun Civic Center. I didn't know that's what we bought, whoever bought it. I think I know who bought it. But whoever bought it, I didn't know was in competition and going to be such bigger than some of these other things in the city. I'm suggesting and would like to see you all go work with the Civic Center and give them the Coke plant. It's just right across the street. And just think, they're going to get landlocked if you do something else over there and build retail. And people's just got so much money, they can't spend all that money on retail. So help the city. They got money coming in. Help the city. And the master plan, I'd like to see the master plan of the Dido Landing. And I hope you all didn't pay $150,000 for that master plan. Thank you very much and have a good weekend. I still love you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Move to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.
Kathy?